And we're on. All right, we ready?
Yep.
All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order for the Nottingham Board of Selectmen for Monday, October 21st, 2019. And if you'd all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first item on the agenda, manifests.
I'll make a motion, we approve the accounts payable manifest of October 21 and the payroll manifest of October 22nd, 2019.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous? I made the mistake once of cleaning my glasses with the...
The puffs?
...puffs with lotion?
Yeah, yeah, that doesn't work.
Yeah, I might as well have smeared Crisco on them.
Yeah, that doesn't work.
All right, next item is minutes. We have public minutes from September 23rd, which we've reviewed previously. And we have a fresh copy tonight, minutes from last meeting two weeks ago, October 7th.
Did we get that via mail?
What's that?
The, the fresh ones?
We had them last time, but we deferred them...
No, for the last meeting.
Oh, did we?
Thought so.
I don't think I've seen them. Did anybody else see them? And I don't see them in here.
I don't know if they went through me. You don't have a copy in there?
I do not have a copy of them most recent.
Yeah, 10-7.
Nope, I don't have those.
No, you can do them next time, that's fine.
The 10-7?
Yeah, but the question is, why didn't I get them and why aren't they in my packet? Oh, there they are in the packet, okay. Okay, but the question remains, why didn't I get them?
I have...
Tell me when they came and who they came from and I'll apologize.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't come through me, so I'll have to, I'll have to find the answer to that. I have the non-public from the 21st.
I got the non-public as well.
That came on Friday.
I got that.
And, just digging back.
I mean, if they came from Kelly, I have two emails from here today.
We're talking 10-7, right?
Um, yeah, 10-7. I mean, did you guys get them?
I got 10-7 right here.
No, did you get it via mail?
You didn't get it ahead of time was the question.
No.
I've been having problems logging in lately. Could be operator error, but...
Well, I went in and set it to forward my emails to me, but for some reason I didn't get the packet until today.
Yeah, actually, I don't, I don't see the 10-7 minutes in email.
Yeah, if three of you didn't get them, then you all didn't get them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, so we'll defer that one until next time. But, the 23rd? Did anyone have any corrections for the minutes from the 23rd?
We had held off on those because...
Because they weren't?
Ben and Tyler, you guys weren't here.
Right.
It's in the email too, right?
Uh, would've been before that.
It would've been on the Octo, the October 4th email before the prior meeting. October 2nd. No, actually, no. Yes, minutes from the 23rd, we got on October 2nd.
Who did they come from, Tony?
Kelly.
So, do we want to vote on those minutes tonight, or...
I would, can, I'd rather delay it for the next time, just so Tyler and I have a...
More time to read it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you good with that, Tyler?
Yeah.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
My apologies.
That's okay. John?
I'm fine with that.
You're good? Okay. All right, then. Minutes deferred until next meeting.
Chris, when we get the packets for the next meeting, can you include those minutes? Those repeat ones?
The repeat ones, yes.
Yeah, the ones that are outstanding, so that everybody is reminded that they need to do those, please.
Maybe, um, just do a spot audit before they get emailed out, to make sure that everybody gets everything that they're supposed to have. I know there was, there was a mix-up on, on the spelling of my email address from last time, so...
Yeah, pretty soon you'll see us, uh, just put those somewhere where you can always see them. We're gonna use that, it's one of the reasons we go to Office 365, is to have a repository for that stuff, so...
But I don't want you guys to assume that we're gonna automatically go out and do that, because we all have lives in full-time jobs and stuff like that, so I think we're gonna need the reminder, right, that this is what's owed for this coming meeting, okay?
Okay.
Is it like a, like a OneDrive container or something?
Yeah, we haven't started tinkering with it, but the, the thinking was, instead of chasing emails, just everybody, you know, you all have access to this place where we could put these things and you could just, you know, they're always there, but...
One thing you can do, um, that, that works just the same as the attachment, is simply put a link to the document in the message, that, that you can click just as well as downloading it?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine, I just, you know...
As long as we all get the same...
I think there needs to be a reminder, you know, these are the things that have to be reviewed and ready to discuss at this meeting, rather than just assuming everybody's gonna go out and check that drive.
Okay. Excuse me. All right. All right, action items from last meeting. We have, according to our minutes, we have election prep, including food for election workers, uh, that which is on the agenda tonight, and future meetings, new road standard policy, which we also have in front of us tonight.
Did we say we were gonna take that up next time on the, at the 7:28 meeting? I mean, the 10:28 meeting? No, we didn't.
No, we had talked about, for tonight, um, a road standard for new construction.
No, for Class 5 roads.
Right, right, new, Class 5, new construction. As opposed to...
Well, when we get into it, we'll, we can talk about the distinctions, but...
Yeah, but there was a distinction there.
Okay. So, again, I...
No, we can get into it now, if you want.
Well, no, I, I, I apologize if I, it seems like I'm being a jerk, but I don't know what the, um, focus of the discussion is today, and having just, tonight, and having just received those documents today...
Yeah.
I don't know what the expectation is on how productive the conversation is gonna be tonight. So, I don't know if your intention was just to send the documents to kinda like, set us up for what we need to do for the next meeting, or did we think there was gonna be productive discussion tonight? And I, again, I apologize, I'm really not trying to be a jerk, but to get something this morning...
No, I get you, I get you.
At the same time, um, you know, I wanna push things along...
Right.
As we promised, but...
What we had talked about last time was those two sets of standards, one for, you know, new, new Class 5, you know, modern construction, and then a set of standards for, whether you call them legacy roads, historical roads.
I get it, I get that, but...
The, the assumption was that the new construction of standards would be low-hanging fruit.
I understand all that, Tony. All I'm saying is, we didn't get anything until this morning. And so, how does tonight be a productive conversation if we haven't had a chance to read all of the background stuff that was sent to us?
So, are you...
Did anybody read the stuff that Chris sent?
Yep.
Yeah.
You did, you did. Ben, Tyler?
I have not had an opportunity, as I said, I've had some issues getting in.
Yeah, I understand.
But I'm, I'm, I'm looking through it right now, but, uh, I mean, that's obviously not what we're gonna discuss right now, so we have time to review it somewhat, right?
We have, I mean, we have, uh, budget.
Yeah, I, I just, you know...
Yeah, I mean, to your point, we got the materials a little last minute, so I get that. Probably should've got them mid-week, last week. I mean, we're still in flux, I get that, so...
I mean, so, I, again, I'm not sure what the outcome goal of the discussion was tonight.
Well, hopefully, we could've, you know, unless you're not comfortable with it, my hope was that we could, um, agree and approve these, um, this proposal for...
No, not for, not for something I received at 10 o'clock this morning.
What do you guys think? Do you want more time to review the material?
I'm ready to go anytime you guys are.
We can discuss it, can't we?
Love in the discussion.
Yeah.
We don't have to vote on it, but we can discuss it, I would imagine.
Are you okay with a discussion without making a decision?
Sure, but...
As, as a, as an exercise in reviewing the material?
Well, I, I have not read the material.
Right, but we'll have a chance to go through it tonight.
So, the exercise will be during this meeting to read the material.
We'll, we'll go through the material and discuss it tonight.
We can start.
All right, going forward, I mean, this is a pretty significant, uh, topic of discussion. I would think that going forward, we should have this information the weekend before our meeting goes, so that we can have a whole weekend to digest this. Does that sound fair?
That's all I'm asking.
Chris?
No.
Does that sound fair?
Yeah, yeah, everybody but Donna got it Friday, as is our, you know, we customarily give you everything for a Monday meeting on Friday, it comes in a package. You didn't get the package for technical reasons, pilot error, whatever, um, but that... We've all, we've, we have always buried you on Friday with the material for a Monday, you know. You wanna change that?
Well, something like that, I'd say we probably should have it mid-week.
Exactly.
Mid-week prior to the, uh, meeting.
Which you'd, you'd rather...
Particularly on a hot topic like this.
You, if you'd rather get things as they're ready, instead of, as a body of stuff for the meeting, however you want it.
For something like that, I think...
However you want it.
Sooner is better.
And Chris, this, I'm about to say, but, you know, I'm looking through my emails here, I don't brace anything, and on Friday, I did not receive all the information we're talking about tonight, I received this morning at 9:08 a.m. from Kelly.
Okay, so you, you're in the same bucket as Donna, that, as far as I knew...
I had time today to read and go over everything, so it's...
As far as I knew, Friday afternoon, you all had it. We learned, we learned this morning that you didn't have it, so...
I've got it right here.
Yeah. It is, it is our intention and our practice to send things on Fridays, if you, you know, if something went wrong with this one, and I apologize, I don't know what the technical hitch was.
Yeah, and I, I get, I get that we're going through a transition, I, I get that, I get that, but to expect to get something and, and think that we're gonna make decisions is not realistic.
No, no, you're right.
But on a hot topic like this, I think I'd rather have it before Friday.
I agree.
Mid-week.
I agree.
I mean, regular business, general business, yeah, Friday, mass email, whatever, however you send it, but on something like this, where it's gonna take some time to really go through, fine-tooth and comb to come up with a, a policy or a decision, I think we more than, we need more than just a weekend, 'cause we owe it to the townsfolk to make sure we get this right. And giving us that time is gonna ensure that. My opinion.
I agree.
All right, well, in the interest of being properly prepared for this discussion...
I would say, let's hold off to the next meeting.
Till next time.
Yeah, I mean, yes, I'm, I'm good with that, except for the fact that, when, what's the date of the next meeting?
Twenty...
Before.
Fourth of November.
That's the one that I'm going to be away. So...
Excuse me.
November 4th?
Yep.
You're gonna be away?
Yep, which I, like I told you, Chris, before.
Yeah, you did, I remember you mentioned it, yeah.
So, um, I mean...
What's everybody's thought about a special meeting pertaining to this?
Well, we did talk about that particularly, like if we have to have a workshop off-date, so that everybody is here, that we should consider doing that.
To maintain our timeline.
Yep, yep.
So, if you're not gonna be here in the first, perhaps maybe we should have something before then, a special meeting?
Yeah.
'Cause if we're gonna keep within our timeline, we're getting into election season and all that other stuff, so...
Budget season.
Budget season.
Yep.
I mean, we can certainly, I can certainly meet next Monday night, if you guys wanna do another Monday night.
I'm good with that, I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
I'm here.
I'm real.
You wanna plan for next Monday?
Fine with that. Same time?
Sure.
Same bat channel, same bat place.
Yeah, so that'll be our one and only agenda item for next week. Okay.
Thank you.
What's today's date? 21st, so... That's not trick-or-treat night or anything, is it?
No.
But we can bring candy if you want.
Haven't thrown at us, right?
Okay. We are still on action items, so, future meetings, tax deed waivers, and that's, that's on tap for November 4th.
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, reports from assigned boards and committees. Budget?
I was not on either of those 10, I think you attended my place, didn't you, John, or was that...
Uh, I attended the one before the last meeting. I didn't attend this Thursday, if there was one this week, I didn't go to it.
I was not aware of one of the, since that last one that John attended. Was there one, Chris?
There was one last week.
There was?
Yes. Are you official, taking that team?
We haven't talked about it.
Okay.
No, we haven't, it doesn't even carry on the discussion, so... I was just offering that at last meeting, it's up to whatever he's doing, so...
If Mike can be flexible with me, I think I can pull it off for the remainder of this season, um, but I'll have to discuss, you know, maybe some days I won't be able to make it, so...
Okay, so you don't, we don't need to invite him and keep him in that loop, you're gonna, we're gonna assume that you'll be there?
Yep.
If not, you'll work it out?
Yes.
And don't need anything from us?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
No problem.
Okay.
Thank you both.
All right, CIP?
We got notification from the school today that they are working on their piece of it and that we'll have it by, I think she said Thursday, right? Or...
It's imminent, whatever.
Yeah, it's imminent, sometime this week, and I think that's the biggest piece that's missing, right?
Yep. We have to hammer out a couple highway things, but, um...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Marston?
Nothing new to report there, progress continues.
Okay.
Looks good.
Yeah, it does, doesn't it?
Yeah, it looks really nice out there.
Any action on the dirt? I remember I asked about it.
They've been using quite a bit of it last time.
It's, uh, we've, no, we have not moved forward on it anymore, waiting on a, a sale mechanism, was the last I heard on it. Does that match what you heard?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, we're, we're headed in that direction, but nothing's been finalized. They were working out, the, the guys were working out a, a plan for that, but...
And the time of year, like getting closer to the snow season shouldn't impact that at all, or...
We don't have to rush.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll, it'll be Mount Mas, Marston.
Marston Hills Recreation Area.
Yeah, exactly. Bring your skis and your snowboard.
Could be a good sledding hill. Run again. Uh, 300th?
Uh, meeting Thursday night.
Upcoming?
Yep.
Okay.
I wasn't at the last one, I was away.
Okay. And planning board?
Again, was away for work, wasn't here for the last meeting.
Okay.
Same goes with you. If you need me to fill in, I'm, just text me, message me, and I'll go sit in the meeting.
All right. And if he's not available, let me know, I can go too. There's still Thursdays, right?
Thursday, Wednesdays.
I'm sorry, Wednesdays. Yeah, okay. All right. All right, town administrators report.
All right, uh, I'm gonna ask you to sign this appointment for Edward Myers as our new, as a new full-time police officer. Uh, he, we're working towards getting him to the academy in January, um, and in the lead-up to that, we had talked about the, um, the retirement of our investigator as a part-time, becoming a full-time position. We need another slot in the New Hampshire retirement system for another full-time person, so there's a form associated with that as well, that you have to approve our doing that, so I'm gonna send those down for you. Sam, do you need to get in? Is that what this is? Here, take, you got it? Thanks. Cub Scouts down there a minute ago. In, next topic, in June, you had...
I'm sorry, uh, we just sent in that one?
That one and that one. Uh, in June, we had talked about the sale of some town property that had been tax-dated years ago, um, and, so you had approved the sale of a collection of them, and then I went and did some more homework and found one that we couldn't sell yet, because we had to take another legal step before we could put it on the market and wait thirty, 90 days. We've gone through that process, and I'm now ready to, um, post those. The, the ones that have made it through the process, that, you've already, you've already talked about these, I'm just letting you know, we're, an update. One on Rogier, two on Water, one on Freeman Hall. The Rogier and Water ones are tiny little ones that you said merged them together as part of the sale, uh, and the one on Freeman Hall is at the intersection of Freeman Hall and Garland and all that. The one that, the one that, that we used to have a house on and tore down. That one, uh, you marketed, I think, a year ago and passed on the offers, and we said, let's throw it out there again, so, um, that is about to go live, you can read the gory details if you wish. There were two others that we had, uh, kind of in the mix, um, one of them on Gerish, one on 152, a piece of backland, um, that I did a little bit more homework on and couldn't get to the point where I was confident that we owned it enough to sell it, so, um, unless we get some titled search work and survey work done on it, um, I don't think we can sell it in good faith, knowing, you know, we just don't know enough about it, so, um, those two got pulled off the list, um, and this is what's left. If you someday get to the point where you wanna pay somebody to do real title research and survey work on these things, um, it, it might be worth it, it might not, but, um, it's, it's beyond our ability to, to figure it out. It's not surprising, it's, uh, there, there's always stray little pieces and parcels around that we, we just don't have great knowledge of, and this is, this is some of them, so...
But isn't that usually done as part of the deeding process?
If it were done today, yes, it would be, um, but these are, these go way back, um, you know, they've been in town hands for a very long time, or the, we just don't have records on them. So, we have pieces, little bits and pieces, sometimes we know the history, but we don't know the location, we don't know the bounds of it very well, sometimes we know the bounds and we just don't have a clear history of it, so, um, rather than sell something we're not really confident in, it's, I'm gonna talk about a lot of them. Yeah, I mean, you can, you can kinda protect yourself, but, um, just in good faith, not, not selling what you don't know what it is, is, yeah. So, anyway, um...
Can I interrupt you with a question about this?
Yep, sure.
Um, how, how is this, um, this new full-time position in the retirement system, how is that gonna impact the department budget?
Uh, I don't remember the digits, but, um, it, a few things. We will have, if you look, going from, say, what we budgeted for this year to what we budgeted for next year, we've had that retirement and comings and goings, so the actual numbers are a little different, but, um, we will go from 32 hours a week to 40 hours a week in that position. The, the pay rates are a little bit different, so it's about a 25% increase there, not, not quite. We'll pick up another benefit, uh, health insurance, dental insurance package, depending on the family configuration of all, the people that we hire, we don't know how much that is, it's somewhere between 10 and 20, uh, and then the, the retirement contribution for police officers is 26% of wages, 20, between 20, 26 and 29% of, uh, wages, so, um, we, we had to talk through all of that before we hired the last couple that we had and, and talked through how we're gonna shift our, the people that we have. So what you'll see in the budget is an increase in that full-time salary line, an increase in the retirement line, and a decrease in the part-time wages line. We're, we'll be down to one part-time officer. We are now, already.
Okay. And, there's enough worth to justify it being 40 hours versus 32?
Any, any time not spent doing investigating will be on patrol, so, and there's no shortage of that. I, I think what, I mean, we, we have a, we're going from a, a 25-year vet to a three- or four-year...
So, is already someone senior for it?
We're, we're training and, you know, drifting into that, yeah.
In-house?
Yeah. So, I think what we, I think we're probably getting more than 32 hours of work out of our 32-hour employee, uh, so there's, there's no shortage, certainly. Yeah. Let's see, we, we're gonna talk about tax rate setting, we can do that later during the budget, uh, discussion, and lastly, if you want a hard copy of our audit for last year, I've got a few here, we finally got printed copies, anybody want that? Or do they have an electronic? You tell me. You want one?
Yeah. Good cure for insomnia.
It is. Uh, like I said, we're gonna talk tax rate setting, but do you wanna come back to that since we're at seven? You wanna loop back around?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Okay. That is all I have for you.
Okay. So we'll take a budget after?
Yep.
Is that all you got?
Yes.
Okay. All right, at seven o'clock, our next, our, uh, item on the agenda is, uh, election officers and planning for the 2020 election. Come on up. In fact, if you all wanna come up together and... Have a combined.
Isn't it Bonnie's appointment?
Um, it was, it was a, Bonnie asked for a discussion of all of us, all of the election officials, so... You guys wanna come up and?
Hold on, I'm hosting, we lotto.
That's a big folder right there.
Yeah, sure, those over there, this one there, that one there. I don't bite. I'll slap you, but I won't.
We have chairs, lots of chairs.
So I trust everybody knows everybody. Those of you who don't know Dana, this is Dana Gillis.
Yeah, my first name is Sarah. Yeah, absolutely.
And the Town clerk. And these guys all have their name in front of their face, so it's a surprise. So I wanna first thank the community of us. This is going to be a big election year, and we have them every four years. And I just wanted to pull the group together and, um, have a discussion on what's going on and also talk about maybe an expanded role for the select board members. Then what has been your jobs, looking at what you've done in the past? So, um, does everybody have a copy of my agenda, which is, um, meeting agenda?
Yep.
You should all have it in your packet, yep.
Do you guys have one? Sure. So these are just, um, does any, any of the board need one?
No.
I have one.
Hi, Mr. and Mrs. Paul. Pardon? Is there one I can add?
Oh, of course. If you share.
Bonnie, careful, you're gonna get wrapped up in the wire.
There's gonna be something to scribble on.
I get an extra one, too.
An extra one?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, so one of my areas of responsibility is to make sure everybody knows their role in the elections, that's the law. And so I think it's good that we all need to talk about some of our, um, responsibilities, um, some of the changes that we might make this coming year, and the title weight that is placed on us. So, the first item on the agenda, after my worst feel about responsibility, is the election calendar. So I intended, wanted to use this for everybody. This is just simply a list of the elections that are coming this year and the dates of those elections. And so I would appreciate it if you all marked them off on your calendar. You, um, you have to share one?
Uh, it wasn't confirmed yet.
No, that's fine.
It's an expectation at this point, okay?
Um, I think I already have. Did you make these? Thank you. Not really happened, but I know that Chris has gone over that, so just, like, just be a nice chat. So, um... So in this coming year, we're all going to be put to the test as a team, and I'd just like us to be able to function as well as possible as a team. So a wise person once said, "Democracy requires participation." And to run a successful, clean, smooth election is not really easy, but it's our goal, and it requires each of your authority and participation, not just the select board, but each of us, 'cause we each play a different role. The election supervisor, the checklist, the Town clerk, and the moderator. By the way, feel free to interrupt me or ask questions at any point through this. If, I think you should wait, I'll tell you if I, I'd like this to be kind of an informal discussion. How about a serious one? So, um, the next item on my agenda is just to point out the New Hampshire Election Procedure Manual. Really just the photo of the cover sheet. And so why am I giving you this? I don't know if the selectmen each get one of these, I'm sure that Chris has one.
I got one last year.
So, let me just say that they only come out every year. That's a dangerous, that's a dangerous word, uh, thank you.
You ruined everything.
They only come out every other...
I don't, I don't know that any of them need that.
So this is the manual that will get us through two thousand and nine and enter truth, most of twenty-one, in the fall. Usually we get it before the November election, which is kinda scary, given that this is a year with two other, you know, federal elections before the November election. Usually they, they, the Secretary of State waits until the legislature is done changing the laws, making the laws, tweaking the law, so that we have an updated, um, version of everything we're supposed to do for that upcoming election. So if you don't have one of these, I would recommend that you get one, um, because it spells out everybody's jobs and everybody's procedures, procedures for just about everything. And, um, the Secretary of State would be happy to send them to you. I know that we all get one automatically, at least those of us who...
Is it available electronically?
It is available electronically, yes. Thank you for asking that. So you can go online and put in New Hampshire Election Procedure Manual, be sure it's with the year, or you might get one from two thousand and fourteen, but they are online. The next item that I wanted to talk about is the town website regarding elections only, that's twenty-nine minutes earlier, about, at this meeting. Um, we did, you did extend the polling hours as requested by the town meeting. So we'll now be opening at seven AM, and I don't know how else we broadcast that besides the website, but I think we need to make a little effort to make sure that information gets out.
Bonnie, that goes on Election Net, that I'm required to enter all that information, where we're going to hold our meetings and what our hours are. So it'll be on Election Net as well.
So, so, um, I was just...
People can dial in, people can check into that.
They can, but I feel that most people don't really know about it.
So that, I mean, that just seems like an easy one to me, right? Chris and team can take care of the website, Channel Two signage.
It is.
We can put something out front a couple days or a week before the election, so everybody knows. So that, that should be an easy one, right?
That should be easy, but I also wanted to add into that, that I would appreciate reworking the election page of the website. Um, maybe, because we can talk about it, there are a couple things in there, I think should be... And the change in polling hours should be emphasized, everywhere, on television, wherever we broadcast anything, everything. But you're probably on top of that anyway. One, one of the things, um, one of the things I would recommend, and there may be differing opinions about it, is that we call the voting place, when it's here, a municipal building, not the community center. It took, I was in town three or four years before I realized what the community center was. But the town municipal building, I think everybody knows that term, is where they come to, to see the Town clerk and do any kind of business they have with the town.
Might be just me, but I think about it the other way.
Are you?
But, yeah, I always think community center.
But most towns don't have a community center, they have municipal buildings, if they have one at all.
Yeah.
So when you move here from somewhere else...
Or would you just call it Town Hall?
Or you'd call it Town Hall.
Yeah.
I mean, Town Hall, everybody knows Town Hall, that'd be the...
Yeah.
Instead of getting community center.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And Town Hall is very simple for people to know. 'Cause even on our, our signs, does it say Town Hall? Four syllables versus one. Town Hall works.
And that you use the same language every year.
That's a good point.
I've seen it as both.
That's a good point.
And then it's easy to say, "When is this?" And school is much clearer.
What do the signs say at the foot of the driveway?
They say, "Vote here."
No, no, the big sign, it, does it say the municipal center? What does it say? I can't, I've been by it many times.
Thanks, thanks for pointing out that we all drive by it twice a day and we have no idea what it says.
Whatever that is, is probably what we should use.
And maybe with a picture.
Town Office?
I think it says Town Office, yeah.
It's a fair point.
Yeah, it is a fair point.
It's true, consistency.
Could you get out there with a marker and a Sharpie?
Especially where we have these changes coming up, the, the time change and...
Place.
Venue changes for a couple of them.
Yeah, no, you're, you're absolutely correct on that.
We need to emphasize those this year.
Yep.
Usually we're very good at doing that and just bringing that up, 'cause it's important this year, more important than normal. So we can use Town Offices as the...
I would prefer Town Hall.
Town Hall, I think everybody's saying. Does anybody object to Town Hall? I think it should be whatever it says on the sign.
Yeah, I think you should.
That's a good point.
But again, I understand that, I understand what you're saying, I totally agree, but in classic New England style, we've always called the town buildings Town Office.
We've got people here from Kentucky, John.
Okay. It's safe to say that the majority is still made up of New Englanders.
Our, call it Town Hall. I mean, I grew up always as Town Hall, so it's simple, it's easy.
I don't know what Town Hall means, maybe it's simple, but community center was not easy when I first came here, because it was something that's...
I'm in agreement with you, John, Town Hall.
All right?
I'm in agreement with John, Town Hall.
Chris, could you form a committee?
Perhaps we should vote on it.
There you go.
So the next item is inspectors of elections. So twenty-twenty is a new term year, or the importance of inspectors of elections. And how they are designated is a rule of procedure. Yes, I have a hand. I think these are primarily for the selection, because most of us, except for myself, we go to them. So if we just make sure that we have it, yes.
Just here, well, we can pass them down, don't, don't put yourself in hazard here.
So I bring this up because if appointing inspectors for two years is kind of a major challenge, we've done it at least two times, I think, before.
Are they all on the same?
Everybody's appointed for the same time.
Okay.
So the term, the appointments are like this, you can tell the parties wrote this law. Each state political committee of the two political parties which received the largest number of votes cast for governor at the last previous general election is authorized through their respective chairman to appoint between May fifteenth and July fifteenth of each general election year, two inspectors of election to act at each polling place. If the number of voters qualified to vote each polling place, so that means in towns that have more than one, they get this number for each polling place, one additional inspector of each fifteen hundred qualified voters or fractions thereof in excess of two thousand.
Okay, so, so Bonnie, who is in our town, who, who's the inspectors?
So, um, well...
By name? Just so, just by name, so that we just kinda understand?
There's too many of them, maybe the real offer, number one and number two.
Ballot clerks?
Ballot clerks, the checkout clerks.
Okay, thank you, I was just trying to figure out, yeah.
Not just ballot clerks, though, they have been checkout clerks and other election workers. Sometimes we've had creators for the last presidential to get people into the school to the right place, because we have to go in the door that's like a half a mile from the gym.
So anybody is an inspector?
Not anybody, you're not, they're not, I'm not, moderators, clerks, but the rest of them, pretty much.
Okay.
Unless this is somebody that I appoint. Or you appoint. So inspectors of the elections is their name, they're not called ballot clerks, and that's because not all of them are ballot clerks. All ballot clerks are inspectors of the election, but all inspectors of the elections are not ballot clerks.
Just so I can understand, can you give me the names of two or three people who were inspectors?
Sure, Pam Kelly, you know Pam Kelly?
Yeah.
Sue Mooney.
Yeah. But they still sit and they do, they check people in?
Those two do.
Okay.
Do what, some names of people who don't?
No, I'm just trying to understand the role, is it, so...
Well, what they do, okay.
Is it when you're at the table, you have one person for each party?
They're not elected, they're not officers, but they're election officials. They're appointed for two years, they're sworn in.
Okay.
And they perform all the functions that we don't do, that we can't do because there's so many functions now required. Anyway, so the parties get the first dibs at appointing, too, but if you read all of this, you'll see that they can also appoint more. And I saw in reading this that each state, each such state political committee may also appoint such equal number of additional inspectors as the moderator considers necessary. Like I've always said, the selectmen appoint the additional ones. And there's no procedure that I know of for doing this, nobody's ever asked me how many I think we need, and in fact, until last year, nobody, other parties ever appointed anybody in this town, since I've been moderator. So basically, you can consider it the selectmen's job, because if the parties don't want to, they don't have to, they're not required to.
So if the, if it, it's the state political committee that is appointing them, does that get delegated down to the, if there's a party?
We don't have control over that and no say, I'm sure they, I'm sure that's how they do it.
Okay.
But, you know, the weak, the weak part of that, obviously, is they may not know the person they're appointing, they may not know they have good vision, good hearing,
Yeah.
are good with details.
Yeah.
Which is one thing that we can usually at least steer you toward people that we think should do a good job, because they, they have to, they have to perform well under pressure and deal with a multitude of details, which if they don't get right, has a lot of problems. So if they don't do it, if the parties don't do it, and they don't appoint enough, then the selectmen do it. So that's one of your really important roles, and that it's coming up this year, it's going to be, I will provide you with the list, the current list, and you can learn from that, and appoint, and, and anybody else, we always filter names in, people that we think might be interested in working on elections.
What is...
As far as I'm concerned, the more that you appoint, the better.
What is your expectation, Bonnie? That you're going to give us that list and that this board is going to reach out to those people to see if they still want to do it?
Exactly. And then you have to have some kind of vote that appoints them, that has to be official, then they have to be sworn in, they can either come to me or to Sandra, be sworn in.
Okay.
So they get sworn in for two years. So they get sworn in for two years. And formally, we used to do this for every election, look for bodies. It works better than doing it for two years.
Okay.
It doesn't mean they're going to stay necessarily, you know? It's not, you can't, you can't make everybody stay. So the other...
Bonnie, before you move on from that, you're, what we've historically, the appointment has historically been, whatever the law says, the practice has been, the other election officials, I think it's been you, I don't know, maybe the supervisors were involved in this, recruited and found people that the parties didn't appoint. You know, we assume that the parties did not appoint anybody.
It's not, it's not...
You have recruited and, and trained and placed these people essentially to do this work. And the selectmen have signed the form at your request, saying, "Here are the 10 Democrats and 10 Republicans that we have identified that are willing to do this work for the town," right? That's, that pretty much been the process. So are you suggesting that you'd like the board to make sure that we have enough bodies to do this?
I think...
You're gonna, you're gonna give them a starting point and then they have to go find 10 Democrats and 10 Republicans, or is it that...
No, it's good to have some of both for obvious reasons.
Or whatever it is. Their, their role in this process has been extremely passive in every election leading up to this, in that...
That's because we did not appoint them for two years until pretty recently. And I'm kind of...
Appointment being the last step of a, a long process of...
Swearing in.
Okay, so swearing them in is, the second, the second to last step is the, is the, is the board signing a sheet of paper that makes them eligible to do this work on Election Day.
Right, and then they should be notified by the selectmen that they've been appointed. And they should accept the appointment.
Sure. But the, but the, the act of appointment is essentially a paperwork and swearing-in process. The hard part of this is finding the people to do the work. And what it sounded like, what you just said, was that you were stepping back from that and you wanted the board to go fill all the slots.
I'm thinking of the law.
And I don't, I understand that, and I'm not, I'm not talking about what the law says, I'm just, I'm trying to identify what the back practice was and what you would like the future practice to be. Because I didn't want that to slip through that, hey, you didn't go find 20 people...
That's why I questioned it, yeah.
Let me add this.
And...
In the event that we don't have enough staff, guess who's responsible for finding them and appointing them? Me, in the law.
Now, you're just thinking about two inspectors. I haven't looked at this, these people are supposed to be walking around observing what's going on, not sitting down. I mean, that's the way I see it. Why would there only be two in this, if you can add an extra one? So only six people are going to be able to do the election?
Well, actually, in Nottingham, what's our, what's our number of voters right now? 4,200-something? Four, one, 4,000, 4,000, I think.
Yeah, almost 4,200.
Let's say 4,200. So, so we get one person for the first 2,000. Then there's 2,000 more, so we get, then there's 1,500 more, so we get a person for that. And then there's a fraction of 1,500, so we get a person for that. So that's three.
In the law, did it say something about the political parties who'd find?
They have the first dibs on finding.
Now, does that mean the state political parties or the local political parties?
Okay, so I read the law. The committee is authorized through their respective chairman. So the chairman of the party, of the state chairman, they are, it's their authority to appoint.
So they want to send two people here each to, with our election, which they probably won't, because they're probably short-staffed too, also.
We did get two political appointees last year, last, um...
From each party?
The midterm. No, the Republicans did not, the Democrats did.
Okay.
They don't have to, but they may.
So...
And they get the first period of time in order to do that.
Right.
Wouldn't a good place, a good resource to go to to find these people would be the local Republican committee and the local Democratic committee? And have them recruit the people? Is that within the law or you?
It's the law, no, the law says they can authorize whoever they want. I believe that last time, I think that they went to the local chairman of the Democrats.
Who went?
The state?
The state chair.
No, the state chairman of the Democratic Party, I think, but I'm not sure of that. And it's outside of my purview, really. None of my business how they do it.
Unless somebody doesn't do it, then it falls on you, you say. And it goes to these people.
Right.
And if they don't do it, then it goes to you.
Right. Okay. I'll leave the chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I think to maybe clear up some of this confusion is, the law says that, that they are supposed to do a certain number of people. However, obviously, we're not going to be able to run an election with two Democrats and two Republicans and 4,000 voters. They, we have to have more people than that. So that's what the law says, you know, we have, you know, they can, that they can appoint. But we need more people than that. And from a very, um, I can't think of what the word, the last thing that I would like to see personally is us leave this to someone else until the very last minute, and then us scrambling to find people that can work the elections. Because this is not a matter of having bodies. This is having people who can be detail-oriented and do all of the things that they need to do with 4,000 voters in, in a short period of time. And the, the more we can have good, qualified people that can, that can do this, the better things are on the other end when we're trying to do our, our work after the election. So, you know, I know that that's what the law says, but I, I would really hesitate to say, okay, well, let's just let's see what they're going to do and then, you know, try and find somebody at the last minute.
There is nothing to prevent us from doing it. And if the, but if the parties appoint persons that we have not appointed, I must use them as ballot clerks. Okay?
Yeah.
No, I wasn't saying that. I was trying to clarify...
Number two, the moderator may appoint such other election officials as he or she needs.
Why is this so hard to grasp?
It's simple.
We've all been to the election in town. We all see the people that are working there. We understand what this says here. The state wants to put two people in, if the state Democratic Party wants to put two people in, they want to put two people in, they're going to be working our, our booths with the people that we already have in town.
But they haven't had...
If they don't send them, we still gotta have people to fill those positions for people to work.
Right.
And there'll be, there'll be people in town that are volunteering to help out, that are approved and done.
But we've never had people from the state parties that have actually worked the election. They don't, they don't...
Yes, we have, yes.
They, they come and they sit at a table? They come and they sit at a table?
Correct. Those were Pam Kelly and the other one was Sue Mooney.
What I meant was not people who...
Were appointed by the Democratic Party.
People who weren't part of the town.
So I think, that's why I think the party went to the party chairman who knew Democrats who were already working the elections. But they're not required to.
So, to John's point, like, okay, what you're showing us here says, "The appointments shall be made by the selectmen of the town, award in equal numbers." So we've been doing that. That's always come to us, right? For the appointment. We've done that step of appointing, a list of names that have come to us. So why are we talking about a change this year? I mean, I don't see that our role changes.
We're not talking about changes here tonight, just changes. We're just talking about people's role.
Okay.
And, and we don't appoint them every year. So this year coming up isn't the point.
Fine, okay.
That's what we're talking about.
So this board can expect that you guys will come forward with a list of people that you want us to appoint?
You can help with that.
Okay.
That would be the best-case scenario.
Right, so like you said, if the state wants to, if the state political parties want to send their people down, you have to use them? Or you're gonna have to find, you need...
The way the law is written clearly, as Deanne pointed out, they don't, they don't provide for enough people to do the job.
Right.
So we always have to have more relative. Now, I can go to the parties, it says in here, and say, "We need more than three people." But there's no procedure for doing that. Nobody from any party's ever asked me for that, so...
Right. But one way or the other, you're gonna have to find people to make sure that you're staffed enough. And those names you'll bring to us.
Right, and the names we will start with will be the people that we've used for the past year. Both the ones who were appointed a few years ago and those who were maybe for the midterm election.
When do you think you'll have that list?
I have a list on my computer.
Okay. So why don't we just start with that list there, find out the people that are, that are willing to do it, and then we'll just work from there as to getting the new people that we need to get on?
Nothing wrong with that.
I mean, that's pretty, the simple way to do it. If we already got 10 people committed to help out...
Except that, we're in the middle of two terms here. The presidential primary will not be the new term of inspectors. It's the old term.
Okay.
It runs through July. Those people are appointed through July. And the new board will come on, the new group will come in office first.
So it's really next spring?
The primary and the town meeting. But that's three days.
Yeah. So really, you won't be bringing us names until next spring, early summer?
I don't see any point, no.
Okay.
I don't, it doesn't say that you can't appoint them before April 15th, but...
Do we have enough to, people to fill the February 11th?
We never know that people are going to continue, John.
Okay.
So we schedule that, really. We have enough, well, we'll take that up in a little bit because I'm going to suggest we make some staffing changes. So...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there any way, let's say you use the list that you already have, and everyone is called, and some people can't do it. Is there a way to recruit new people for the old list?
Well, it, people can always be appointed if we don't have enough staff.
Okay.
So if we can find people, we'd be good. Yes. Okay, thank you. In fact, we did that in the last election. I mean, we've had new people who expressed interest, who we appointed in the middle of the term. But it's a lot easier on us to get people, you know, because, you know, they have a lot to learn. So we good with that?
I'm good with it. Any questions?
Okay, so the next item is meals for election. So that's an issue that came up in the last year or so. We used to have an abundance of people who were willing to use elections as a fundraising mechanism for their organization, for example, town organizations. And those people seemed to have petered out in the last year. So I'm just throwing this out to the board. I like it if people can have food because it's easier to recruit people. It's not a requirement. Some towns provide food for their workers and some don't. Even the towns right around us, I know that Lee provides food for their workers all day. Barrington does not. But they do have people outside the polls. But at the moment, I don't have much interest. If there's anybody out there listening tonight who works on an organization and would like to raise money, I have to say they usually raise very good money, providing food for workers, especially if they also provide it to the public. And a lot of people will come through and buy sandwiches or baked goods and... So I mean, since, since that's a funding, if the town were to provide food, it would be expensive to the town. So it's not an issue that we, the selectmen are not asking you to decide tonight if you think it would be good. I don't want the other officers to spend all day. And some of us are there. Now it'll be 6:00 AM until at least midnight, most of us.
Who brings all the food that's in here all the time?
We've had a variety of people. Okay, so this is my eighth year as moderator. I'm finishing my eighth year. In that time, it seems to me in the beginning, we had, we had private persons more than once. We've had churches. We've had Shelley and Pat DeRocher and Shelley Tennis. They work in the food pantry and do a lot of good work in the town, and they've raised money, they've done it, they've organized it, and given the money to a variety of different, obviously, in-town costs. So, you know, fire department, police department, direct department, like that.
Women's Club did it last, was it last year?
Yeah, the Women's Club. But it's, it's, it's a big job to organize it. And they usually get volunteer, volunteers to cook things and bring them.
Can I make a suggestion? Sorry. Before we go further in this. The election's February 11th. That's when we're gonna need to know, you know, at the school, we'll have everybody working. A month before, if we don't have an organization come up, why don't we just decide whether we're buying finger sandwiches or whatever for the, the crew and make that decision then?
Because you have to have it in the budget. It's gotta be in the budget.
Thank you very much. So the other thing is, is that it's good for us to know a little bit...
To spend 200 bucks.
It's not, I mean, last week, last year, the proposal that we ended up, I think, spending was like $6,000.
For $1,000?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. 600.
I wasn't at that party.
That was the after-party.
Was that for one election or for the whole season's?
For one election.
For one election, yeah.
But when you consider that we sometimes have a staff of, um...
30?
No, 40, 50. And there are three meals. There aren't 40, 50 there all day, but about half of them all day. And they're free meals.
You did for each last year?
Free meals, most of the...
It was 600? Was it just coffee and bread?
I will say the food last year was pretty good, yeah.
Well...
It was pretty good.
It works best when the townspeople make it. I mean, we had some great meals.
Yeah, oh, I don't want to take away from them, they were good, too.
I know, it was coffee in the morning, coffee and pastry, but was it actually sandwiches and stuff? Okay.
Yeah, there was soups and bag of cheese.
Yeah, they had everything. Coffee, all kinds of stuff.
I mean, when you're here all day, you get kind of tired. And it's, it's nice to be able to come in here, or, or in the kitchen. We've done it in both ways. And here, it's only for the election workers, and Shelley and Pat did that a lot. They organized people to provide food, and they didn't make any money. And they didn't offer to the public, but they provided for all the election workers for several years. But I think they just kind of burned out their volunteers, burned out. You need some new blood or a new way of doing it.
How about groups that traditionally haven't done it before, like...
300th.
Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, 300th Committee, they want to raise money. The Rainbow Girls, the Local Masons, their hall just burned down. They're gonna be looking to raise funds.
Marston Committee.
Marston.
Yeah.
I think it works best if the recipient of the money is in town.
Yeah. 300th.
The Masons, if I'm down there, they're all there.
Yeah, but it's, that's, that's a regional, it's not open to Northwood only, my point.
That's good to know. Or something of that nature. So, if there's somebody out there listening, or you know somebody who is involved in an organization that needs money, have them give me a call. And I will probably set them up with Pat DeRocher or Shelley Tennis, because they know what's involved more than I do.
The Women's Club, they have a scholarship, an annual scholarship that they need to raise money for, so...
I believe that Pam and Shelley still want it. Pat and Shelley still wanna do it for town meeting. But I know that they raise quite a bit of money at every single one of these that they hope into the public. Because people go, we make people go out through the kitchen, and that's where they're usually located. And it's usually by donation, and this is a very generous town.
If the election's here, though, there's not a lot of room here as it is. I mean, we had people, you know, up and down the hallway. Well, I think for the primary, the school's gonna be at the school. Yeah, no, I know, school's a great place to have it.
For the school, we'll probably have the cafeteria available still. Yeah, I mean, I would love it if that came together, just...
Can we put something on the website that says, that puts out the ask out there to see if there are any groups that are interested?
Mm-hmm.
The last Thursday night at the 300th.
And when you do put it on there, just specify a great way to make money for your organization.
Yeah.
Specify that they're not doing it as a freebie for the town. They're doing it to pump their, uh, money.
Right, right. New Lions Club. And point out that there are five elections, so...
Four.
Presidential primary, New Hampshire primary, general election, town elections, town meeting.
Okay, well, if you had a split town, you're right.
The meeting, I believe Shelley and Pat still want to...
Saturday.
Okay.
The Saturday.
If they do, I will let them, they do so much for the town.
So the remaining four elections. So we could have four different groups that each pick an election?
And the three, the big burnouts will be those two primaries.
For them, to show our appreciation.
And the general election will have their, those will have their stampedes. Okay. You good with that?
Yep.
So the next item is checkout clerks. So in the past, pretty much since I've been moderator, we've had a beautiful number of checkout clerks. We have ballot clerks, which can also be called check-in clerks. And I was under the impression earlier that there was a law that didn't allow that. But that's not exactly true. I didn't interpret the law, right? There is a law that doesn't allow you to use the checkout procedure that's used by non-vote count machine towns. So in a non, in a hand-count machine, in a hand-count town, people check out with the town clerk. And then they give their ballot to the moderator, and they take their ballot and put it in a box. Everybody's ballot goes to the moderator. And then below that, there's another section of the law that says any town that has a vote count machine shall not use the above. So, the above is a checkout procedure, but it's not exactly like the kind we use. It doesn't involve the town clerk. So, ours is neither prescribed by the law, nor is it against the law. However, we do have a vote count machine. And I had a long, a couple of long chats with Anthony Stevens, about the procedures that we use. And he told me that approximately 190 towns have vote count machines. So that's, I think there are 220 cities in town that have it. So, most of them now have moved to a vote count machine. He also told me that of those 190 towns, approximately 10 have checkouts. That's it. Most people don't use them anymore. We did also have a discussion about the benefits of checkouts. And there are benefits in finding the states that happen at the check-in. Let's say you have a son with the same name that you has who still works at home, and they came in and they checked out you instead of him. It helps with that kind of procedural error. But we also talked about the fact that most people don't use them anymore. And I'm, like, thinking we should try that here, because...
We had this discussion at last meeting when you were here.
No, we didn't have a discussion...
We were asked about checkout, the procedure, how we had checkout. I mean, I was sitting here.
Yeah, we did discuss it.
We did talk about this. And about whether some members of, that worked the election, that did the counting, really liked having that, because it did catch up the mistakes that happens. The very few, but the ones that were there, which made it for the end of the night easier to tally and make sure the votes all came together the correct way. But then there was your procedure because of the machine, where you read the law, same one you just talked about, about not doing it. And then we left it up to a discussion of whether we were going to keep it or not.
Well, it's not, it's not a group decision.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, but that's kind of where the conversation went.
Well, I've learned a couple more things since I met with you in September.
Okay.
When you were talking about, when we met about, really about the change in the towns.
Yeah. Is it up to, is it, is it your decision whether we have the checkout or not? Okay.
Yeah. So, I've had discussions with both Anthony Stevens, who's a Deputy Secretary of State, and Dave Scanlon, who's also a Deputy Secretary of State. And they both, pretty much all they do is elections. They're election people at the Secretary of State's office. I don't think most of us get to talk directly with Bill Gardner, but they're with the next step down. And so, given that finding staff is getting harder and harder, and given that having checkouts, people, twice, twice as many people as not having them, and given that nobody else has them hardly, I thought we should give it a try. Anthony and I also discussed a couple other ways of catching mistakes. And I'd like to, I don't want any of the other election officers to laugh here now. I'd like to involve the selectmen in the hiring process. So it would be a more serious kind of job at the elections than you've ever had, than put pencils in the booths and directed traffic. But he thought, Anthony Stevens thought, that would be a great use of some of the selectmen anyway, to work, to work as what they call either drive-bys or walk-bys. I can't remember the term, I thought the term was kind of awkward. To monitor what the ballot clerks are doing. And in order to do that, you have to learn about clerk procedure.
Excuse me, just so I'm clear, I think I missed a step. Are we still talking about checkouts? Or we done that?
We are talking about checkouts and responsibilities, both together.
Okay.
We're talking about, well, right now, here's where I'm at. If we do the A to checkout, I'm suggesting that a couple of selectmen, at a time, monitor the ballot clerk tables. Not, not be in their face, but just listen and observe what they're doing and make sure they're proceeding with accurate steps.
So we'll look over your sheet.
I'm pretty sure that none of you have probably ever worked as a ballot clerk, correct?
Nope, not many.
So...
Well, if you're talking about the people who you go to first and they give you the ballot...
That's what I'm talking about.
We've done that, yeah.
We've, we've sat in and covered while people have taken a break or eaten lunch or something like that.
You've been allowed to pass out the ballot.
Okay.
That's not, I mean, I would want you to be monitoring the other person more.
Got it, okay.
The person who passes out the ballot is also supposed to monitor the ballot clerk, the ballot clerk being the one who actually is supposed to monitor the person who's checking the checklist. I mean...
So why isn't that the checks and balances right there?
That is. But if we do a way with checkout, it's another way of safeguarding the accuracy of what's written on the checklist, which is an important point. So, in the eight years that I've been supervisor, the chores that are given to ballot clerks have increased. So that, especially in the primary, you know, they're putting on the red pen, picking up the black pen, doing this, that, the other thing. But it would make it a lot easier to staff, but it would require some training, so I'm...
What is the training process?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you, uh, my post. I, I, I brought you out of the Election Procedure Manual, which is kind of by the way of elections. That's where the statute's written up as an act instead of just a law. It's a two, it's two pages of information. So, you would need to teach yourself this information, attend the education that the supervisors do with our staff, and also probably be aware that looks like the Secretary of State's going to have his training online. This year? Starting in December, or by December, it's probably... So, at least to the selectmen, everybody else is later.
May I ask a question? Is, um, your purpose of doing a way with checkout is because you're afraid you will not be able to staff them?
That's not the only purpose.
But if that is one of the purposes, could we first check to see if we have enough other appointed inspectors before we go that route? And if we have enough, because we, we do not use the same amount of ballot clerks as we do checkout clerks.
Well, we, we do in a busy election. But we've switched it to one, but we used to have two. So, what I was thinking with that page was that we have a clerk or moderator, one of each, down at the exit end of the room, and that those, those persons not only make sure people put their ballot in the vote count machine, but make sure they don't leave with a ballot. And, um... And we have five tables of check-in instead of four at these big elections, so that we'll have room for that in the, in the gym. We don't really have room for it here, and we squeeze in four sometimes, but it's definitely a squeeze. Here it is. And we have this corner. So that we have a monitor and a town clerk, and/or selectmen monitoring the exit end. And have five check-in tables, have selectmen serving as walk-bys or drive-bys or whatever they call them, to monitor the ballot clerks. That's, that's a state procedure that's in the manual that we have never used. And because you're already staff, you have bodies that you have to find.
I'd much rather participate in the process than doing what I've done from before, putting pencils in there, markers or whatever, that, that actually sucks. So I'd rather do, do whatever I can to help.
It takes you a long day if it doesn't utilize your intelligence.
Yeah, no, I mean, I just assume help. I mean, I see some of these people in this room, I see where they're the whole entire time, and I'd love to give them a hand, so...
And there's one of, there's one of the safe parts besides the monitoring, that private institute, and that is, at the end of the night, that we hand count not the votes, but the ballots that are in the machine. Like, in a primary, basically two counts, you know, pink and blue, whatever color they are. Because we're doing two elections in a primary. So that those are hand counted, and that number is checked. And that's something that the selectmen, who are also responsible for the number of ballots and the integrity of the ballot numbers, you could help to at the end of the night.
I think we've done that before anyways.
No, we don't, no.
Well, I...
We don't hand count them, we don't hand count them.
I think that Tony's...
I'm not talking about the vote count, excuse me, Donna. I'm not talking about the vote count, I'm talking about counting the ballots.
The actual ballots.
I think Tony's point is that at the end of the night, the select people that have been there have done whatever is needed of them, so...
Right, so this is making your, you need it even more. Some of you could work on counting votes. We only usually need to count the fragments. And some of you could work on counting the number of ballots actually in the machine, which would give us another number, you know, another level of confidence that that's the number of ballots that were actually cast. That's one of the numbers we have to report.
Tony, can you make a couple of comments?
Sure. But before you do, we still have the rest of our agenda to get through, so I'm gonna cap it off at another 10 minutes.
Okay.
So, we, yeah, we have the rest of our agenda and non-public to get through. So...
Wait, not for you?
Yeah.
So, do we just...
Oh, but Deanne wanted to make a comment.
Okay. So, whatever decisions made about checkout, obviously, is out of our hands. I just wanna make sure that everybody understands a couple of the things that supervisors need to do with the checklist after, after the election is done. And to start with, the things that the check-in clerks have to do is check off names, check addresses, update them if necessary, update names if necessary, check voter IDs, put the state initial if it's an out-of-state driver's license on the form, check CBAs for primary, because that's primarily, no pun intended, what focused on right now. If they're undeclared, they have to write what party they have voted with. They have to write whether or not they're an absentee voter. And the last thing that they do before they give someone the ballot is they strike their name out. The striking of the name out says the person received a ballot. So all of those things happen before they strike the name out and give them the ballot. This is important, because when we go to do our work after the fact, if someone's name is checked off on the ballot, on the checklist, but their name is not, has, has not been stricken through, we're not gonna scan them into the system. This is one of the key things, mistakes that we find every single election, is the name is checked off, but there's no strike through. Okay, we can go to the checkout book. Oh, there's a, there's a check mark there too. So obviously, something happened and their name simply didn't get struck out.
Dee, how did the other 190 towns in the state handle that? Not, not being sarcastic, just asking.
No, totally fair question, because I asked that question last week myself. So let me finish one thing before I come back to that. So, if we don't scan their, scan them into the system, in 2021, we have to do the purge. The purge, anyone who has not voted in the previous four years' election, in, in any election, even once, is gonna get a letter that we're gonna remove them. Now, we, if, if we haven't scanned them because they've been checked off but not struck out, chances are they can get this letter that we're gonna purge them. Which, not a huge deal, because they can just fill out a registration form and, and it's fine. Other towns simply don't care. They don't, i- if, they just do their work and they, 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 you know, scan the things that are there. In fact, a lot of towns haven't even done all of their scanning from last year. And they just don't take the pride and the, um, the responsibility of making sure things are done right, that we all, as a group, have, you know, have really appreciated the fact that, you know, when we do this, the number that we have at the end of the election on election night is the same number we have a month later when we're finished our work. So, I mean, that, that's the reality, because a couple of the people up at, in Concord that I talked to, um, that was the answer that I was given. So I just wanna make sure that you guys also know this. So after the primary, we have three weeks to, these are the things that we have to report. The number of Republicans, Democrats, and undeclared voters that voted. The number of undeclareds that voted Republican or Democrat. The number of undeclared voters that went back to undeclared after voting. Absentee voters, CBAs, out-of-state driver's licenses. All of this stuff we have to do in three weeks. The more mistakes there are on the list, because we're gonna, because we use unquali, because we use unexperienced ballot clerks, the more potential mistakes they are. I only wanna make sure that everybody is on the same page and understands that that is the reality of us making this decision. So, beyond that, I'm...
So, ultimately, it's your decision, right? Okay.
Yes.
So, a suggestion was made of, let's see how many people we have to work the election. And then let's make the decision of whether we have checkouts or not. Is that not a reasonable approach at this point in time?
It is, except... It is, except having, I guess, having the selectmen more involved in doing more important jobs.
If you need the selectmen to act as over-the-shoulder people, I can't imagine anybody at this table who won't do that. Am I right?
I'll have the whole day off, so I'll be here whenever, first thing in the morning or 12 o'clock at night, you'll see me.
All day, is it?
You just tell me when you want me and I'm here.
I want you all day.
I mean, should we do the checkout?
I've got an hour to go away, but I'll come back.
Okay, so, select board's willing to take on that role of looking over shoulders, right? Whatever training we have to do, we'll do it. That's fine. It's your decision, so I'm just curious as to how much more time we have to spend discussing it here.
With you.
Can selectmen, select people be checked out? I think they could be.
That'd be good, but I'll volunteer.
You think this one is?
Yeah, it'll take a while to frame me. I've been putting marker in the bush.
Exactly, we understand. It's like counting the cards at the end of the day. It's not gonna be very fun, but somebody's gonna do it. We're all here to help.
Excellent.
So education and training, let me just say that the Secretary of State will have training for officers. It's probably gonna be by webinar this year, it probably leaves on January. The inspectors of the elections will have training by the state. It should be ready by a PowerPoint online webinar by December. So just write that down, because you all are gonna learn how to be ballot clerks, so you can look over their shoulder, you want to take in that training, as well as the training that supervisors put on in person for hours.
Dee, is that during the day or is that-
Not necessarily. We've done, the last couple of times we've done it before a primary, we've done one during the day and one at night. And if we do it in this room, we can put it online. We can do it from wherever.
So when you decide on a date for that, let Chris know. He'll let us know.
So, I don't know how effective doing it live and video, you can't see them, although you guys always have a big board. Doesn't really show up on the television, but anyway, I think that in-person training is the best. Hope you all can plan on attending one of those sessions. So, moving on, I just want to mention incompatible offices, which I use a lot to say, no, you can't do that, just so you know why I say it. If you want to read the law, you can look it up, 617, I think I put in a permission file letter that I brought, saying we're gonna have this meeting, hopefully. So required attendance, so, believe it or not, I'm not required to be at an election, but you are and supervisors are. I'm not sure the clerks require you. God help everybody if you weren't house stand. Anyway, so the supervisors need to have two people there whenever the checklist is being used, and they will also be registered voters that day. And the selectmen need, you will need three. So I know that, I think you don't need that at town elections, but I'm not a lawyer, but I know the Attorney General laws, so you need to be there at all times. And I think that's because you know the Constitution, which is where that law is based, cites that you need to be there for receiving votes for governor and offices like that. There's another law that says town elections have to be run the same way that federal state elections are run. I just want to point that out. I don't want to belabor it. I know your attorney thinks you don't need to be there, and this is not about town elections so much anyway. Okay, then the last item on my agenda is appointing someone to stand in for you if you cannot be at the elections. So, somewhere I have a packet, my packets are all got mixed up here, but we don't have that one too. So it's really easy to do. You can find somebody, it's this one, this one's mine. Did any of you, oh no, here it is, here it is, I had a paperclip on.
658:21A. The selectmen is absent or unable to perform.
I'm giving you this whole page and I highlighted really the part that's relevant to this agenda, which is you can, no, we all can do it.
I got it.
Or can do it, you can run, can do it, I can do it, to appoint somebody pro temp if you cannot represent at any election. And that way, our election crew can still function. But, you know, if we think you're coming and you don't, it means a whole, especially if you, if I graduate you to more important roles, which I would like very much to do. And there's still, there's another job, which I always have an assistant moderator do, who just stand at the door, make pictures of anybody who doesn't have an ID and blah blah da da da. You should do that as well. You just can't identify voters without an ID, but you can say, hey, do you know any of the election officers? And the person can say, oh, everybody thinks they know Sandra, by the way, because she doesn't remember everybody necessarily, but you can ask, Sandra, do you know blah blah blah? You'll call up in the room and she'll say yes or no, or anybody that knows. So all we officers except selectmen can like be voters. So it's probably good, but that's another job we could do. And I want you to be aware of this, appointing someone pro temp, this is a new law. It used to be we all could appoint people to stand in for us, but you couldn't. But now, since about two, maybe three years ago, you can. So if you can't be available, I gave you the calendar, oh, you're gonna be in Mexico next February 11th, you can appoint somebody to take your place. Anybody, the person must be a registered voter, so they must be on the checklist.
In Nottingham.
Yes, in Nottingham, yes, I know. Must be a registered voter. In this town, they must be 17 years of age at the time of the election or older. You don't have to go to Peter Boggs, although I'm sure he'd be happy to do it. I said off the top of my head, are you listening, Peter? It could be any former selectman or anybody, any person. You just would tell them what they probably need to do. If your job is monitoring the ballot clerks, probably, hopefully you better not be at a town clerk. So that's the last item on the agenda. Does anybody else pause our time, Tony? We're already done.
Yeah, we're pretty much out of time. Does anybody have any questions for?
I also brought, do you have this first? This is a diagram of the home place that you laid up under manual. And there are certain things that I'm gonna have you lay it up and this is probably, what happened to Steve? I crossed out, who else did a selectman, but most of you clerks, if you don't, you probably, please. There are actual measurements-
Killing a lot of trees here, Dana.
But ballots cannot be closer than six feet of chains, which are called guardrails here. Guardrails and chains are the same thing. You know, you can be closer than six feet of chains for voting. And so, so that's pretty much everything I wanted to discuss with everybody.
Take it for your time.
All right. Yes, thank you. We got a lot to chew on here. Huh?
Don't fix up the joke.
No, no. Ready? Sure? All right. Jumping back to budget planning.
Okay, two themes, one being 2020 budget, one being tax rate setting. Let's do tax rate setting first. So every fall, you work with the, you through me, work with DRA to set the tax rate for the tax bills that go out usually right around the first of November. Most of the work is already done, most of the numbers are baked in. You have two decisions to make when DRA says we're ready to go. DRA collects all of our financial information, collects all of school districts' financial information, boils it down and gives us a preliminary tax rate, and then you take that information and decide two things. One is what's called overlay, how much do you want to set aside for abatements next year? And two is, do you want to use anything from our fund balance, take any money out of the bank to buy down the tax rate, to take money out of the savings account and make the tax rate lower? That process tends to move very quickly. We want to have tax bills in the mail by, ideally, the first of November so that they can be due on the first of December. We start running into cash flow problems. I mean, I mean, don't worry about really, but we depend on tax revenue to fund our operations and fund the schools' operations, so. So, we're coming up against it. I finally got DRA on the phone today. We're ready to go. Every, the school's information is in, the town's information is in, we've been ready for 10 days or two weeks. We're just waiting for the various bureaucracies to finish their work and come back to us with a preliminary rate. The discussion around overlay is pretty straightforward. We use the same number pretty much every year. There's nothing massive waiting for us in abatements that we know of. It's pretty straightforward. The use of fund balance is not something, I think we've done it once in my five years. It's not something you often do, but you should make a conscious decision on it one way or the other. So what I'm gonna give you tonight is a guess at what the tax rate is gonna look like and what those numbers that make the tax rate up are, and get your sense of where you want to take the discussion of do we want to use fund balance or not? If we can come to some consensus around that based on these draft numbers, I think it will make it very easy for us to not have another meeting and discuss all that around rate setting. We can just move through it. You'll see the final numbers and say yes or no, and away we go. So that was the speech that I had prepared before we scheduled a meeting for next Monday. We're gonna be here next Monday, we may just end up doing this then, but it is getting close to the point where we want to get those tax bills in the mail. So I'm gonna give you what my guess is of what the numbers are gonna boil out. There's things that can move and I'm not the smartest guy on the planet, but the bottom line is I think the tax rate, this year's tax rate is 2264. I think, and don't do, if you're at home and watching this, don't do anything with this information. This is a guess, it's an estimate. No, it's okay, I just don't want anybody to, you know, make any financial decisions based on it.
Call it a projection.
It's, yeah.
Not a final number.
Yeah, don't do anything with it, but for conversation purposes, we're at 2264. I think we're in the neighborhood of 2272, which is an eight cent increase in the tax rate per thousand or four tenths of one percent. So that's the neighborhood that we're in, very small rate in the tax, increase in the tax, or very, very small increase in the tax rate. There's a lot on this sheet. Only a little bit is under your control any longer, most of it's already done. The big, the big reason for, if it comes in that's small, we haven't had that in a while, the biggest, the biggest driver of that is the unspent money from the school district's fiscal year that just ended. So anytime they have unspent, budgeted but unspent money, that comes back to the town and basically reduces the tax rate. That, you can call it a surplus, you can call it a fund balance from the school district, it's money that was appropriated a year ago and not spent. So it, we collected it in taxes and we're getting back the surplus at the end. That number is much bigger in 2019 than it has been in a while, by probably $400,000 more. So that, of course, the school numbers dwarf anything else with the state or the town or the county or anything else.
So what do we do with that 400 grand?
That, you don't have, you don't have any say in it. It just comes off the tax rate, period.
Correct.
Nothing, no decision to be made. The school board has some very small decisions to make around the fringes of that, but that's done. So the effect of that in 2019 is going to be, they'll really cap any dramatic changes in the tax rate. Okay?
That's why I really only see that .04.
Right, that's, that was such a big number. It dwarfs anything that we, you know, we're responsible for, you know, maybe 5 million a year, the school's responsible for 13 million a year.
Right.
Whatever, whatever those, the school numbers drive this whole thing in a really big way, so. We can get into the weeds here, you can just skip down to the bottom and there's what we think the tax rate's gonna be. There's a section here of what is the fund balance. That comes from our audit. Our auditors, we, you know, finish up 2018, close the year out and say, here's your undesignated fund balance, that is your savings account and your operating cash. That stands at about 1.4 million right now. Didn't change much from last year. So that is, that is the fund that you can dip into to offset the tax rate if you wish.
And where are we in that? You know, there's the whole range.
Yep, the DRA says you can go as low as 5% in there of your total appropriations. The government finance officials recommend somewhere between 8 and 17%. You're at about 9%, so you're at the low end, the low, mid-end range in terms of what you want to have on hand. This is not just a rainy day fund, but this is our operating cash. We use this to get through from tax bill to tax bill. And anything, any other purchases we're making are all flowing through this, this same body of money in a way. You've always, the only time I've seen you use fund balance to tinker with the tax rate is in the case of a big spike in the rate. You've, you know, your thinking was to moderate increases.
We did it two years ago, right?
Two years ago, yeah.
Yeah.
But then the tax rate go up like a buck and a quarter the next year?
Well, yeah, it was-
Yes, that was to reduce the increase.
Right, no, you took money out, you took 400 or whatever, whatever you did, you took it out of the fund balance and you did it to buy down the rate and then the next year-
It inflated.
It inflated it even more, because people were complaining about why it'd go up so much.
Exactly.
So it kind of almost defeated the purpose.
Exactly.
So if we're not even at only 8% of where we could max out at 15%, I don't think we should do anything and just leave it go and say, move on, my opinion.
Yeah. I agree.
Yeah, this tax rate's virtually flat.
Yeah.
I don't see a compelling reason to buy it down, not at the expense of reducing our operating cash flow.
Anything you buy it down, if you could buy it down by a dime this year, you bake in a dime increase next year by, almost by definition, so. It's great for one-time things and it's, or if you know you're always gonna have a surplus, some towns kind of-
Budget that way.
They kind of budget that way. They habitually have a surplus and you- They habitually have a surplus and you, and, and buy down, you know, just use different budgeting methodologies than we do.
That's a practice you should be doing on a regular basis, not on a periodic basis.
Yeah, some, some do it regularly. Right.
I, I think, given, it would be a different story if we were at the high end of the DRA range.
Yeah.
If we were at 13, 15% maybe, but given that we're at the low end of it, I think we stay there.
I agree. Tyler, Ben?
Yeah.
What do you think?
It looks good. Leave it.
Okay. So, you, again, these are draft numbers. When we get hard numbers, I'll email them to you, and I will tell you what I'm going to do unless I hear from you otherwise.
Yep.
And if we're in this neighborhood, then, and we might be in a position to talk about it a week from tonight since we'll be here, but.
Okay.
We don't want the process to, we don't want our own internal process to slow down the rest of the process, so. Just for, just, probably the first question that you ask is, what is it, what's the town, what's driving the town number? Are the town tax rates going to go up? Two, two big things are, are doing that. One is the change in the Veterans Tax Credit that Town Meeting approved in March. That looks to be about $116,000 change in, in how we shuffle the tax bills around.
Yep.
And the second one, we had a, we don't typically have single big appropriations like last year's Marston, $100,000 appropriation for Marston. So, that's in here. The excavator that we bought, we bought that from the fund balance. Town Meeting took money out of that fund balance last year and bought that. That's where you're seeing the 155. So, the two big drivers for the town side are the Veterans Tax Credit and Marston on top of the regular operating budget and stuff, but that's where the big changes are coming from.
Okay.
Okay? Good enough?
Yep. And then the overlay is going to stay the same?
I, I would suggest you leave the overlay the same.
Yep.
You know, when we, next year, when we're doing a revale, we're going to put more money in there aside, we're going to set more aside because there'll be more abatement requests after a revale in 2020 than there would.
Okay.
Typically, so. Okay. Second, operating budget. I, last meeting, I said, hey, I'm going to throw this at you in a couple of weeks. If there's anything you want to, us to talk about in our budget or, or, you know, present differently, or priorities, or guidelines that you want to give the staff, we are now in budget development. The department heads have their work seats and are starting to work through them. I can tell you some of the stuff that's on our radar, that are, that's different than the, the routine, but I really want to just make sure you had an opportunity early to, to weigh in before we come back to you in three weeks with a first draft. Okay? Am I going? Good? Am I going too fast? And this is just, this is a brain dump of, of things that are, that are going to affect the budget. Four elections, if you didn't know, we're having four elections next year. Legal costs, we've been getting hit pretty hard, but that seems to be cooling off. We only have a couple of things open, but we're, and we're just going to make it under budget this year. I, I think I told you in writing, our health insurance and dental insurance and a couple other employment-related insurances are going up in the range of about 7%. That's a big number compared to what we had recently. Your workers' comp's going to go down a little bit, but all those other ones are going to, are going to go up about that much if we keep the same benefit plans. We don't often have a huge menu of choices. We, we tweak it a little bit, but that number's probably going to move about 7%, in all We still have the old town hall to deal with. We had come into this year talking about remodeling the kitchen here, which we have not done yet. They're kind of related. Our, our heating oil and propane prices are going down. That'll work to our advantage next year. That bid process is done. Earlier tonight, we talked about that part-time, full-time mix in the police department. That'll be the biggest change in police. There's also a little bit around the mobile data terminals and the cruisers. We bought those this year and paid for the operation of those things, the software and the licensing and the cell coverage and all that kind of stuff. That was all baked into a warrant article in 2019. Some of that will show up in the operating budget next year. It's an ongoing cost that we knew going in. Fire and rescue, probably a little bit more in the per diem. You know, we, we bumped that up this year. It looks like it's working pretty well, so I think you may see a request for more there. Perhaps some administrative support around the, the town office, the building inspector. Still chewing on that. The, the big, the big discussions and the big thinking in our, and from my perspective, the number one priority for 2020 is almost all highway-related. And I had a list of things that I was thinking I would bring Sean in to talk with you about in two weeks. If you want Sean to be part of the road standards discussion, maybe we do that next week, too. We might be ready to do some of it. They're really unrelated. They just happen to be the same.
Yep.
Department. But our, our full-time, part-time mix in highway, we've got guardrail issues, we've got, we've got facility issues. You've, you know, we, we know we've got fuel tank stuff that we talked about earlier this year. We still don't have an office. We, we got storage challenges. All these facility things point to, and we've bounced around this concept, too, but some kind of strategic planning around public works. We've, we've got to, we've got to have the discussion about what does contracted services look like? How big is our fleet? You know, all those long-term things. Our facility challenges are part and parcel with those. We've got things around the gravel pit. We're prepared to do a survey of what's in the pit and what can we do with it? How long is it going to last us for what we, what we need? Could we sell some of it? That, you know, we have some kinds of materials that we'll never use. We might be able to, we might be able to find a market for that. So, you'll hear us talking about that. And then ledge farm and other road maintenance projects. We're, we're right smack dab in the middle of ledge farm, but we're going to need you to make some decisions about what to ask Town Meeting for around ledge farm. And do we try and bang through it next year? Do we throw everything we have and get this project done? Or do we stretch it out over two more years? We're, we're still mapping out choices for you there, but, you know, there's, there's something to be said for just putting this thing behind us and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. As far as highway overall goes, are, are you and Sean looking at strategic plan? Is that going to be kind of like a three-year type plan of, because obviously, we can't tackle everything at once, so is it, is it going to kind of stage stuff out or?
I think we should probably get some help to do that well. I think we can, you know, we can kick around ideas and we can, you know, we can figure out the pit, and we can figure out a road maintenance plan, and we can figure, but, but it's all kind of piecemeal.
Yeah.
I think we might want to get some outside help on what are you going to be in 10 years?
Yeah.
And it, it's, it ought to encompass recycling as well with the changes in the recycling market and, you know, what is, what is our, what's our public works supposed to look like in 10 years? We've, we've always just kind of done what we do and tried to keep up. In the, in the couple of years that we had there where we were flailing around, around, particularly around highway stuff, we kept telling ourselves, we got to figure out what we're going to be in 10 years.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it's probably beyond Sean and I to do that without some outside.
But that would be a priority for you guys like next year to.
Yeah, we need to, because, because it really, it drives the CIP. It, you know, all of your, your capital purchases, you, we need to, we need to know what we're going to be in 10 years to know what we need to do to tomorrow and effectively. I don't see us proposing any vehicle purchases next year. We need to put money away, but nothing.
So, 2020 was the year that we didn't have anything, so 2021 is.
Well, depending on which year CIP you look at, there's, it's calling for another utility, another 350 with a sander in prior CIPs. I think we probably don't need that, you know, asked me today, but the CIP's supposed to evolve, so.
I would strongly recommend that we do not go with one-ton vehicles and go with a 550.
A 550, I'm sorry. What we just, what we just bought, yeah, sorry, 550, not 350, but.
Sean will probably have a better idea, but I'm, we may not even need it.
Yeah, and we're going to, you know, we're going to, we're going to try a different system this winter. We're going to, we're going to pick up the old police cruiser. We just, we just bought two vehicles.
Yeah.
We just got to keep, you know, we got to put some money in the bank, because we know we have loader and grader things coming, but I don't see us asking for anything vehicle-wise in the next 12 months. I don't see that, but anyway. You can see how those things are all, that's a hot mess of all kinds of different things around our, our asphalt maintenance and our, you know, we got a, one gravel road underway, and we, we'd like to keep improving our gravel roads and paving some of them. We don't, we don't have enough to do all the things on our wish list, so we got to, we got to apply some science to that.
That's what we should be doing it, though.
What's that?
Spread it out.
What, the pain?
Yeah.
That, that's a, that's a one way to.
Effective way to do it. It's going to get done eventually, just, you know, you can't have it all built in one day.
Yeah, no, but you, you want to, you want to know what Rome's supposed to look like before you start building things, so, you know.
Yeah, you got to have a plan. I understand where you're going with the plan, so. We should have a 10-year forecast, so, you know, a good idea of where we're going to be looking and, and what's going to be the agenda.
Right.
That's where it's going to be important, with Sean involved, going over all that.
Yeah. That, that's why, you know, yeah, we're on the same page. Recreation should be relatively quiet in a budget sense. Recycling's got some equipment, minor equipment things they're looking at. Everything else, I don't think there's any surprises coming budget-wise. So, that is what's on our radar today. As you know, this evolves and things crop up and things change between now and Town Meeting. In terms of other warrant stuff, we've got to get back on saving for revaluation. You know, it's a, you know, 20 grand a year or something. But other than that, budget-wise, we don't see much more unless there's things that you want us to do or prioritize that I didn't just give you.
So, my only question is, we've talked a couple of times in the last couple of years about, you know, making sure staff was at, you know, good salary levels, reasonable salary levels. Do you feel like we're there now?
I think as long as we keep, you know, we, we set aside a, a healthy amount for the merit pool. As long as we keep moving, you know, I don't think we want to get to, we don't want to be the best paid town.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as we keep moving, we're, we're in a better place. We've, you know, we added some benefits this year, so we're, we're more competitive there. So, I think we're, as long as we keep trending that way.
Okay.
We're, we're, I mean, you had a good conversation around police compensation not long ago. You know, we're struggling with firefighters. It, it does keep coming up, but I think we're heading in the right direction.
Okay.
Is, I think we should look at the part-time help for the highway department, increasing that, their hourly rate.
Yeah, we, we don't have much of that right now.
But I'm just saying.
But.
You know, I think they're a little behind the pay scale.
Okay.
Something worth looking at.
Anything else you want either in substance or style around the budget? You don't have to tell me now, but it's.
We had talked about security cameras before for the road shed.
Yep, that's.
Is that something you.
Yeah, we can, we can throw that in the mix.
Differ, given the other outstanding questions, or? I mean, it's relatively short money, and they can be repurposed.
Yeah.
I mean, we have property down there to protect.
Yep. Yeah, that, that should be in the mix. I mean, that's, that's small money compared to the, the water and fuel tank issues that we got there and.
Larger capital.
Yep.
Is it still a plan to gate that?
We have not identified the money to do that with if, you know, that's another, you know, how much do you put into that facility if 10 years from now that isn't the facility, you know?
Right.
And how about the more lighting for the parking lot?
For this parking lot? Well, we just, we just went through and did some. You want more?
I think it should be lit up pretty well, especially for late meetings and all that stuff. You know, we should be able to see all the way down to the.
Do we have lighting over at the library, too?
We have the post lights, and we've got a, we got a light on the, on a pole. It's, hasn't worked in a very long time. We got a vendor looking at that. At the same time, they're looking at something at the sandpit.
Okay, so that should be.
That's imminent.
That should be fixed soon.
Yeah, that's, we, we've got somebody looking at it to.
Okay.
We got a big, we had a bunch of lights out in the sandpit forever. We're getting those fixed, and I said, hey, throw the library into that, so.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure, because somebody said there was awful dark leaving the other nights, very.
Yeah.
I do think that we should make sure that this parking lot is well-lit, because even like on a night like this coming in, the lot was packed, there's kids coming out of karate or whatever it is.
Up top, too.
Yeah, I agree.
We got just the guy for that.
Is he reputable?
Yeah.
Anything else?
That was, that was enough of a, eh, for me. Yep.
Okay.
We're going to non-public. I need to chat with the assessors on the bunch when we're done with our meeting to talk scheduling. Don't, don't walk out without.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion. We go into non-public per, per RSA 91-a colon 32a.
Second.